Meeting to order and ask for roll call.
Belsley.
Here.
Blunier.
Here.
Hare.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
We have a call.
I ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody in the public like to make a public comment? There is no presentations or public hearing. The consent agenda is the approval of the minutes, regular meeting of the March 5th, 2018, and the closed session, March 5th, 2018, and the approval of the bills.
Move to approve. Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Lehman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
The only item I have tonight is VFW fireworks. They requested to, since the village has done a lot of work out there, the audience and people will be far enough away that they could shoot larger, what do you call them?
Fireworks.
Fireworks. Anyhow, well, there's a name for it. The shells, that's it. From four inch to five inch. So, for $1,000 more, they could get the fireworks above the trees so you could pretty well see it anywhere in Morton. So, I told them I would ask the trustees, but I would vote for it if I could vote. So, they were requesting, we've been paying them 5,500, so we'd be paying them 6,500, our portion, and the Park District would be putting in 1,000 more too. So, if I could have a motion on that.
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
What is it we're voting on, Jeff?
$1,000 more for fireworks.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Bigger shells, Rod.
Yeah, bigger shells, Rod, thank you.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blunier.
Yes.
Hare.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Motion passed.
If I remember right, last time you guys gave me a hard time too, the last meeting, so, village clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village administrator.
Well, we have one large item tonight, Your Honor, and item B on the agenda will be tabled till next time. We had hoped to have that here for you, but we didn't, so we'll talk about that in April. So, we're going to start talking about the preliminary budget. Basically, the first few pages, 1 through 5, are just oversight of the process of the budget. It's really, it's more reading than, I'm not going to give you a lesson on governmental accounting. That page there shows the organizational chart of the village. And then on page 6 is really the start of the entire process. This is our budget summary. It goes from each fund, each type of fund, and list out the beginning estimated cash balances, and ends up with the ending cash balance, taking in the revenues, and of course, paying out the expenses and the estimated surplus or deficit for each fund. Currently, we're looking at the general fund is the first line there. We're looking at an overall deficit of $677,314. Going on down, there are various special revenue funds, those are revenue, those type of funds, the revenue that is set aside for those can only be used specifically for the special process that they have. You know, motor fuel can only be used for motor fuel process, business district can only be used for business district expenses. Then we go down to the proprietary funds. Those are the business type funds. Those are ones that charge fees for their services. That's the gas fund, storm water, waste, water and wastewater fund, and then the 911 consolidated center fund is relatively new. We had a small amount in the budget for it last year. That fund will be the fund that pays for the expansion of the police department, will receive the rents, will cover the maintenance. It's basically like a rental property, so it's treated as a business type fund also, like the water sewer and all those. And then last but not least is the fiduciary funds. Those are pension funds, which is the fire pension and the police pension fund. And currently, overall, we have a deficit budget of $302,924 when you put everything And the next slide, I'll let you just basically, is the same type of information, other than it splits the expenses down into their types, so I can let you look at that one on your own. And then on page 8 is a graphical representation of all the revenues by funds. As you can see, the big, bigger dark blue chunk there, $10,616,960, that is the general fund revenue. Next up would be the, what does that mean? The gas fund was $7,787,600, and then the water and sewer is the greenish color, which is $6,466,700. And then, as you can see, the storm water, $1,180, in the kind of pinky color, I guess you'd call it pink. And the other is the police and fire and pension, yeah, firemen and police pension funds, the 1.5 million at the top there. And there's the various small slices of the other funds' revenues. And then we go into the expenditures, just an overall view on page 9. This is the expenditures by type. As you can see, the dark blue is personnel. That would be our salaries, our medical expenses, uniform cost, and in certain funds, in the business type funds, that would also include our payments for IMRF retirement and for payroll taxes. That is $10,102,425. And then the other pieces, the larger red piece is for contractual expenses, and when we get into the budgets, you'll see what makes up those types of expenses. And then the next biggest piece is $6.9 million in major capital outlay, is the kind of pink color there. Not included in your book, but we had thought that it might be a good representation, is the graph that's probably at the end there, Craig, on the very last page. This basically breaks the expenses down by fund, so as we did for revenue, it's basically a representation. The dark blue is the general fund. The purple is the wastewater and water fund. The dark red is the gas fund. The khaki green is storm water. And then, once again, all the smaller funds are represented there also. Do you guys have any questions so far? If I can give you too much detail, just tell me, shut up, I'll gladly do so. Okay, so the next, on page 11, is just a graphical representation of the status on the last 10 years on our general fund. The blue bar represents revenues, the red bar represents expenses, and as you can see, there are a lot of years that the blue bar's taller than the red, but there are a lot of years that the red bar is taller than the blue. And that's what we're expecting this year. And I ought to explain, well, I'll explain it in the next one, but if you look in the second to the last, it's what I'm estimating the current year to be, and then the budgeted year is in the far right column. And so then we go into, on page 12, the detail of the actual revenue for the general fund. Basically, this lists out every type of revenue that we receive in the general fund. There's two pages to it. It starts out with property taxes, and all the columns are the same on all these pages. They start out with fiscal year '15, '16, '17 actuals. Then fiscal year '18, we show what we appropriated for fiscal year '18. Then I show what we estimated the actual to be for fiscal year '18, and then the fiscal year '19 budget. And as you can see, across the line there on the property taxes, we had, in '17 and in '18, I was able to levy more tax towards the corporate, the general fund, than I had been able to in prior years. That was due to the fact that we had some buildup of excess funds in our social security and IMRF funds. Unfortunately, we have spent all of that, so we're now back down to, close to where we will be normally, so we're budgeting only $908,000 for real estate taxes for the general fund. That's a $325,000 drop from what we had levied in the prior year for that, which is a big hit for the general fund to have to take. You know, we would rather see revenues go up, but as you will see at the end here, that's not what I'm projecting this to be. The biggest revenue source that we have in the general fund is about, oh, 2/3 of the way is down, you'll see the 3.8 million budgeted for sales tax. Sales tax represents, what was it, 67% of our revenue in the general fund. And as you can see, 3.74 in '15, 3.81 in '16. Fiscal year '17 was 4.1, but you'll remember that's because we received a $350,000 windfall when somebody got audited that had to pay a bunch of back sales tax. I'm estimating 3.84 for fiscal year '18, and I budgeted 3.8. You know, as our largest revenue source, it's not a good thing that this has stayed pretty flat. You know, as our expenses have continued to increase, it would be great if our sales tax had continued to increase. However, with the advent of online purchases, that's really the main effect of this, I believe, because if you look at what we are actually receiving based on what markets we have in Morton, they are all still doing well, but trending a little down, you know, in the big box store type things, the Walmarts and the farming fleets, so. Going on down, if you look at the bottom of the next page, I'm budgeting $10,277,575 in revenue for fiscal year '19 in the general fund. That will be down almost $600,000, $550,000 from what I'm estimating the current year is. Part of the reason is when the state of Illinois passed their budget and for their fiscal year, which began July 1st of '17, they took a larger piece of what they called the local government distributive fund, which distributes income tax and other small replacement tax to the local governments. The state took 10% of that chunk, a chunk of that away. And for this current fiscal year, they thought they'd be really nice to offset that effect. They basically moved forward their, the timeframe between when they collect the tax and when they actually pay you. Used to be, they'd collect it and they didn't pay you for three months, so they've moved it forward so that now that you're, they collect it and they pay it out in the next month. And then, so in the process of doing that, we got 14 payments in our fiscal year '18. So, that was to kind of make you feel better about the fact that they were taking part of your money away from you, but in the governor's current budget proposal for their fiscal year '19, they are continuing the 10% reduction. So, I think it was a nice way to break the ice that, hey, we're just going to take more of your money down the road, so. Anyway, but like I said, you know, the reduction in income on the general fund side is not a good thing, you know? As everyone around us has seen, revenues are going down and expenses continue to increase. So, in a graphical type, on page 14, you will see the general fund budgeted revenues by type. And this graph is kind of broken up, the dark, or the khaki green in the graph that's up in the left corner is broken out in the smaller graph. I don't, you guys don't have this in your book, I'm sorry, because we've got to thinking about how much more information we ought to provide. And that was just to show, the orange segment of that smaller piece in the right is your sales tax chunk out of the green piece up in the top. So, it is a big chunk of our revenues, and hopefully the state will come up with some way to increase that for the municipalities. I, that's a wish more than a hope, but, you know, so to show you, basically, our largest chunk of our revenues come from the state, you know, that are distributed by the state, some of them, you know, the sales tax is collected from our local businesses, but then goes to the state and then comes back to us.
Wasn't that going to affect us like $600,000?
Right, our revenues are down about $600,000.
Right, wasn't that state most of that?
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah.
Right, and then on page 12, the telecommunications tax continues to go down.
Right.
At one time that was $700,000, it's down to $400,000, and the ambulance and paramedic fees are pretty well the same for the last four years. That hasn't increased much, so.
And the number of calls on the paramedics, the number of calls have increased, but unfortunately, what we get from insurance companies and Medicare and Medicaid has not. You know, it's decreased, and so what we're getting in revenues per call has gone down. The next page is 16 and 17, and those are just the same numbers that are in those previous pages, they're just broken up in the groups of how we group revenues, so it's not really, it's more for informational purposes. On page 18, one thing that I like to do is I want to show you the three major sources of revenues for the, for the village and what the changes have been over time. So, those are property taxes, state income tax, and sales tax. And I was wrong, it's not 67, it's 37. I was sitting here arguing with myself, so. So, on page 19 is the state income tax, which the graph hopefully will show up on here. As you can see, it's kind of been up and down of what we get. As I explained earlier, the state income tax for the fiscal year '18, which is the second bar from the right, was higher than what we're expecting in '19, and it was higher than what we got in '17, and that was because of the 14 payments that we received in '18. In property tax, as we've already discussed, you can see that in '17 I increased the levy for the corporate levy, which is the general fund levy. In '18, I had to reduce it somewhat, but in '19, I had to reduce it quite a bit, so unfortunately, it's going to go back down to where it has always hovered in the last 10 years between the $600,000 and $800,000. So, there's probably another $100,000 chunk coming out next year, because we'll use up one more source of surplus that we had built up, so.
But so they understand that, though, that $325,000 of that, we, we put in $250,000 in the social security fund?
Right.
And $75,000 in the police fund?
Police pension fund.
Right, so that comes right out of that property tax to keep those funded correctly, so it only leaves us $908,000 left in the general fund.
Because as you know, we're in a PTAL county, which is basically, we cannot, as a non-home rule municipality, we cannot increase our tax levy more than the costs, our consumer price index change in the prior year, or 5%, which is ever, whichever's lower. And as you know, the consumer price index, it was 1.2% last year, it was 0.7% the year before, so you're not talking a great deal of money that you can increase your tax levy. So, as I told Jeff earlier today, basically what I do is I look at what we need for the police pension fund, for the IMRF fund, and for the social security fund to pay their expenses, and then what's ever left is what goes to the general fund, because those three have no other source of revenue, and we have to make, you know, the pension fund, we're required by law to make our contribution to that. So, basically, the general fund just gets what's left over. You know, I raise it up as much as I possibly can, and then the net's what the general fund gets. On page 21 and 22, we talk about sales tax, and this might be just a good reference piece of information, it just talks about the rate in Morton. As you know, it's 7% for, within the business district, for anything other than basically automobiles and titled items. Titled items are still, in the second section there, are still at 6 and 1/4. You don't get to draw additional, if you raise your property or sales tax rate, you don't get to get that on car sales or boats or any of those type of items, so. And then the bottom, qualifying food, drugs, and merchandise, we only get 1% on. So, on the sales tax, we talked about it, kind of beat it up a little bit, and basically, this is just a graphical representation of where it's gone. It's gone up a little bit, and then it's trending back downward, unfortunately. So, on page 23, these are showing the expenditures for the general fund, and just like the overall picture, the big blue chunk there is for personal services, personnel services, salaries, insurance, and those type of expenses. And that's $5.4 million for all of the departments within the general fund. The general fund operates, the police and fire commission, the board of trustees, department, Rogers Department, mine, there's the public works administrative side in there, the street department, the fire department, the paramedics, and the police. So, you have, you know, the largest amount of your employees outside of the, you know, public works funds are paid out of the general fund. You know, when you talk your police and your fire, you've got the greatest number of people in those funds, or in departments, so. And then on page 24, we're going by those just expenses by department. As you can see, the overwhelming winner is actually the funky lighter green color on the left there, that's the street department. Next to it is the light blue is the police department at 34% of the expenses. Street department is about 35%. The paramedic department is the orange at 14%. The, let's see, administration is the kind of darker green color, and that's 7%. And then we go down to the fire department, it's 6% in the kind of teal darker blue, and then they go down from there. So, really, in the next, unless you guys want more information on the next few, I'm just going to give you what's budgeted per department, and if there's anything as far as capital to go over. So, the first department is the president and trustees. This pays for the board salaries and expenses related to the board, and that's $30,450, and there is no capital budgeted for it. And if you go to 27, yeah, that's just a graphical representation of their expenses. The big tall one is the year we spent for all the monitors and the projector and that type of stuff, so that's the reason why it was so much more. Next is the police and fire commission budget. They're budgeting 4.7, almost 4.8, or 4,800, I guess I shouldn't say 4.8, makes it sound like millions. This is a paid commission. These are the people who select our officers when we do our testing each, three years? Is that right, Chief Hilliard?
Every other year.
Every other year, okay. And so, that's the graph of that. And then you get to the administration department, and basically, the total, sorry, is $796,575 for that budget in the capital. We normally budget $100,000 for the purchase of property, in case there is property that comes up that the village needs to acquire during the year. There's $1,000 for computer equipment, and in addition, there is $12,000 on the budget, which represents, and you will see this five times in the budgets, we need to budget to replace our server system, computer system at the, that serves all of the village hall and the public works departments. It's on late, it's year six of a five-year life, and so, you know, if we don't have to replace it, we're not going to, but, you know, if we do have to, we have to have it in the budget. So, total cost is estimated at $60,000, so we're splitting that between five department or funds, so this is one-fifth of it is to replace, the $12,000 is the one-fifth for the general fund. And then there's the $45,000 for the landscape waste program out at the sewer plant. And we do also get a small $23,000 grant that offsets that portion, a portion of that $45,000 cost. And if you don't have any more questions on those budgets, I'm going to turn, turn it over to Roger and let him talk about his.
The community development budget is really, if you look in previous years, it's going to pretty much mirror what we have done in the past. That number is $193,550. That takes, that would be my salary, plant commission, zoning board of appeals members, it has to do with, it pays out for, we have inspections, plumbing, electrical, building inspection, all of those things will come out of that, that number. If you have specific questions, I'll be glad to, to address any of them.
If not, move on, Craig.
Move on to the public works department. This department consists of a portion of administration salaries, and in particular, a portion of the chief mechanic salary, GIS manager, and myself. This budget is $221,420. You will notice it's dropped quite a bit, it's a drop of 37%. We had worked, the biggest change you're going to see is we reallocated some of those salaries we talked about. So, enterprise funds, gas, water fund took on some more salaries, and we look at that annually, so that dropped that down significantly. As you know, that's, that department is funded by the general fund too, so obviously taking a little more heat off the general fund. As far as capital expenditures, we do have budgeted just some things for the computers, as for our GIS manager, and new monitors for public work zoning assistant, and then $30,000 for a new vehicle, for our new truck, for the chief mechanic. His truck will actually be traded to the gas department, and truck number 41, which is a 98 Chevy, will be traded in with that purchase. All this will come forward to you guys for approval as we move forward. All this will come forward to you guys for approval as we move forward. Any questions? If not, we will move on to Chief Hilliard.
Thank you. You're seeing mine's on pages 45, 6 and 7. Overall budget at the end of, of 3.7 million on that. If you look at the Personnel Services, this is all contractual, that covers about 77% of my overall budget. There are two larger expenditures in this one. The first is under Contractual Services and everything starts out at 111.23 and you'll want to look under 5380, which is Consolidated Dispatch. This has to do with the consolidation that we're doing and this is our portion of the cost for those services that'll be provided and it's at $340,000. That's through a formula that was comprised out of the, from the consultant that worked on that, is still working with us as we continue forward. And this actually includes costs for, it would be a joint cost between the Police and Fire for overall calls that we have. But I said, it's done on a percentage of the calls serviced by our department. We, we pay for about 7.3% and the Fire Department about two and a half of the overall budget for that. And then down, under Capital Outlet is for, we have budgeted 70,000. That would be under 8,400. And that was for two vehicles to replace. And we are still, just for your information, we're still waiting for the state bids to come out on this one. Last week, they said the end of the month. So they keep pushing us back. Hopefully, hopefully we're going to be able to, to get those taken care of, but we're going to end up doing about the same we did last year is we're going to have to cut a check in April and hold it until we get the vehicles because we already know it takes approximately 12 weeks from the time we order them till we, we've got them in. Is it, any questions for me? Yes, sir.
The telecommunications salaries.
Yes, sir.
Now, that would drop out of this budget, right?
Yes. We anticipate that to drop out, but we're still going to need personnel, so it won't, it won't go to zero. And what we've done is we've reduced the amount that it would normally be in that figure. We're looking at presently reducing it by 66% in the number of staff we have. But we're still going to be paying a percentage for the services that the telecommunications are going to be providing for this dispatch center. So, sort of goes into that figure.
And one thing I probably ought to add, and Craig may not even know I did it, but in the salaries number, there is, I think it's $125,000 included in there to pay any retroactive pay for the police and dispatchers when their contracts are settled. It's also in the fiscal year 18 actual number because I didn't know when it was actually going to hit, so I stuck it in both. So there's $125,000 in salaries that is actually for fiscal years 17 and 18 that is included in that fiscal year 19 number, so.
And also trustee Newman, the chief and Julie will be coming back with info on how we're going to staff for the filing and that, which some of the dispatchers had done for us. And that's where that 34% is and all of you will be deciding how we're going to staff that.
The balance of the...
Right.
You said approximately 67% was, it was going to decrease.
Decreased.
Balance for the administrative.
Two thirds, two thirds of our staff.
Right. That other 34%, you're going to have a vote in how we're going to staff that and how we're going to do that.
But those numbers are in here. As far as costs, anticipated costs.
Correct.
Yes.
As far as the retro, Julie. So that's essentially double counted.
It's in both columns, yes.
Both columns, so actually, when you look at year-end balance, estimated year-end balance, actually...
I didn't include it in that. It's not in the, it's not taken out of the beginning year-end balance.
Okay.
I didn't want to double dip it that way, but yeah.
Okay.
It's in both of those estimated salary figures.
So we're not really seeing a big benefit as far as year-end balance?
No. It'll come out one way or the other.
Yeah.
And also, since we're talking about the police, if you turn back to page 6, the $800,000 on the second column is money we have in there for the police station addition next year. And that money is borrowed from the gas fund because there'll be no rent paid to us anticipated till July or so. So there's no rent to pay the payment on that. So we figured we just had borrowed from the gas fund for a year and that'll give us time to decide whether we're going to borrow money and have a payment or how we're going to do that. But during construction, we were going to borrow the money from the gas fund, which we can legally for a year. And then you'll have to decide, because the rent won't start till July, actually the next budget. So that's going to be coming back up to you trustees how to finance that. And that's why the gas fund income is only 631,000. It's really 1.4 million income, but we took 800,000 of that to fund the gas building, I mean, the police station. So we'll be borrowing no money for that until next budget.
Right. We're not, we're not borrowing outside.
Correct.
Money, but at some point, we need to determine how we pay the gas fund back.
Right. Because we haven't, they haven't given us an exact number for the rent either.
Right.
She did get some bids on loans from banks and percentages, so all that info will be coming back to you trustees to decide how we're going to do that. But for the time being, the 800,000 for the police station addition is being borrowed from the gas fund, out of the 1.4 million income anticipated this year. Is that clear? I just thought that might come up how we're doing that, so let's clear that up right now while we're talking about police.
Thank you.
Is that correct Julie, how I said that?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Any other questions? I turn it over to Joe.
In the Fire Budget, there were no really significant changes in the operational portion of that. We did have a capital expenditure in the amount of $25,000, which was similar to what we saw in 2018 fiscal year. That's for the addition of one traffic premption device, which is a device, if you're not familiar with it, that goes on our traffic lights and then an emitter on the emergency apparatus is able to change that traffic pattern signal to give the green in the apparatus's direction. And that actually makes our response safer, more than it is speeded up because it gives traffic then the opportunity to move out into the intersection ahead of the arrival of the fire truck into the intersection, if that makes sense. So we've worked at for eight years probably, adding those along as we go. And then another portion, about $10,000 of that would be for air pack or SCBA bottles. They have, we purchased those 10 years ago or so on a, on a federal grant, but they have a life cycle to them at which they can no longer be used. So over the last few years, we've been trying to replace those as we go. And then there's also a kind of hidden, not hidden, but it's not under the capital section, but a, under the other expenses, there's $35,000. This would be, represent 10% of a federal grant that we had worked with, Pecan, East Peoria and Washington Fire Departments on, for the replacement of mobile and portable radios. One of the things that was identified in, as a change in the telecommunications for dispatching is that all of the departments which will now be together into the same dispatch centers operate on different frequencies. So this would be kind of a first step towards consolidating some of those things. That's a $1.3 million total grant, of which about $350,000 would come to us. We're responsible for 10% of that, $35,000 then is what appears in there. I would not plan on then actually getting that grant, but we, we are hopeful and we put that in there. So it's a competitive process, we'll save. And that's really all the significant portions of changes, I believe, under the Fire side. Any questions on that?
Just question on the traffic signal grant of devices. Is that something that you schedule Craig, when you're doing, doing a signal improvement?
We've coordinated that in the past, like when we did Cortland improvements, I'm trying to think off the top of my head. There's been several, but usually coordinated with that.
You, you have work planned for Jefferson in Maine this year?
I have Jefferson, Maine, the traffic signal controller, yep. So that might be one to look at, for sure.
That's a big one for us.
Yep. So yeah, that'll be coordinated with Joe. I don't think we've picked it yet, I don't believe.
No.
So.
So potentially.
Yeah, definitely.
And also out of the Fire Budget, 30% of the secretary's salary is in that and 50% of the Fire Chief in the Fire Department budget.
Is there any other questions on that one? And then I also, of course, have the Paramedic Budget, which also had really no significant changes. Obviously, the biggest portion of that budget is related to salaries. I would assume that there's also some back pay, potential back pay benefit that's added into that Personnel Section as well for salaries. And there are no anticipated capital expenditures this year. I'll be happy to answer any questions on that one.
All right, hearing none, on to the Street Department. Street Department, the budget for this year's 3.9, or 3,934,300. That's down, when I say down from, I usually go from what we budgeted last year, not anticipated actual, just to clarify. So I'm anticipating down 4.4, but a large portion of that, and we'll get to that as we go, is the, is the capital projects. So I'll discuss that separate as it comes up in the budget. This is funded through the general fund, as was discussed previously. As far as capital, other capital expenditures, actually before I get to capital expenditures, Ken just mentioned traffic controller cabinets. We've got that in there, modify the Maine and Jefferson intersections. These are just old outdated, need some improvements before something happens. That'll include new cable, modification of signal heads. We budgeted 30,000. Another one that I've discussed in the past, North Morton signal improvements. This is working with an engineer and IDOT to basically optimize the signals, the seven signals between Jackson and Highland on North Morton. People in Hyde Park, Thornridge, those places will be thrilled with this. Basically, as you come to a green, you'll hit all of them. So it looks at traffic projections, all those things. We've worked with IDOT in the past, we just never followed through with finalizing that and we're estimating 22,000 for that. As far as other capital expenditures, we need to replace a plow, $14,000. Painter, we do paint all the hand stuff as far as striping out there. So anything you see in town, it's usually happening at night when everyone's asleep, but we're painting white and yellow. This is another painter, we'd like to have one for each and this is about $10,000, but they do a fine job and we do that every year annually. Next purchase that we'd like to make, we have a skid steer currently, a 259D Caterpillar that is coming up on a three-year buyback. We could keep that, we purchased it. We do get excellent buybacks through Altor for running these machines. We would like to move forward with upgrading to a 289D. I've discussed that with a couple of you that were interested in that. 289D will just allow us to do some extra things. It's high flow, high lift. Three years ago was our first purchase of a skid steer, so now we realize what we can do with it. Put a mill head on it, certain things like that. This will be budgeted 50% out of the Street Department and 50% out of Stormwater. And I anticipate that to come in around $30,000 to purchase the new one and we'll get a new guaranteed buyback for that. Unfortunately, we need a new trailer too. Obviously, this one's a little higher GVW and to be legal with that, we really need to get a new trailer. The other trailer will be able to be used for other things, but this is about $7,000 and is budgeted. Street improvements, like I said, as we get through that, I'd like to go through that in detail when we get to the capital projects plan, but 2.33 million is towards those expenditures. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
The painter is a replacement or a additional?
You know, we have, we've got an old one. The last one we bought was really easy to use, the other one's just outdated and it's just not working the way we want it, but yeah, we do have an existing.
So technically, it's a replacement, but it's...
We will hang on to that and it will go to the parts boneyard for, for the, for the painter, but yeah, it's done. So yeah, that'd be a replacement. Over the last several years, we've been able to really update and have a nice setup to be able to do that.
One thing you ought to point out Craig is on the 5720 on the street lighting, the reduction in cost.
Yes, that's a good one.
Because of the LED.
Yeah, on 5720 in the budget, thank you Julie. And this one is subject to go down some, but on the 5720 line item, I've budgeted 230,000. Obviously, we did some significant LED retrofits. I don't have anything planned for this year, then we continue to work with, you know, the vendors, everyone, just trying to know what's out there, but there's a significant savings there. And also, we've been working with Ameren. Jeff's had several meetings with Ameren. On our bill there, I do anticipate a significant reduction to the 260 to 70,000. And that's just, Ken, you're probably aware of some of this. Ameren, old legacy stuff, so when we pay for street rights, we have flat rate street lights. So if they're not connected to a meter, there's a fat, flat rate, rate for that. Ameren, in the last five years, pushed towards everything's metered, so subdivisions, those things, we're coordinating to have a meter and that comes in as a separate line item and is billed separately now. So I've dove into that with Ameren and they've been great to work with, although you're getting into some of their old legacy antiquated agreements from years ago. Fortunately, we've come across the right people at Ameren that have been gracious to look into those things and through those efforts, I think we'll be able to realize some savings even on our next bill. We saw one come in, they come in, you know, twice a month, some of these bills for electrical and that's all our facilities too, but I'm very encouraged that I think we'll save $5,000 a month on street lighting, on the flat rate portion.
Yeah, on that flat rate, I guess what you'd call the old legacy agreements.
Yes.
Have you done much in a way of retrofitting those with LED or those pretty much just left alone to make?
We have done some of those. I've tried to focus our efforts more towards the ones that are metered. Some of our longer circuits that people have noticed, Cortland, Main Street, Queenwood, on and on, those that have a circuit, obviously, I can realize those savings immediately with the bill at the meter. Ameren is just now changing the LED, because that's always been one of my arguments too. If we're going to upgrade flat rate to LED, where am I going to realize the savings? Because they're still basing their, you know, their fees off of old, you know, sodium vapor lights, those sort of things. So they are fixing those. The downtown streetlights, if anyone knows, we, we updated those to LED, you know, the ornamentals and they just recently updated the rates on that, so we're starting to see some savings on those too. So I anticipate as we go forward to be able to start getting in to changing out the flat rates LEDs too. Prefer to do it when there's grants available, energy efficiency sort of things. With that, Ameren is, you'll notice, is changing out theirs too. They're changing theirs out. When one goes out, they put up a new one. So as you're driving, you'll notice it now, unfortunately, drives me crazy, but it makes sense why they're doing it, but you'll see the LEDs just one at a time. That's how they're upgrading theirs now too. So they're realizing the savings. Hopefully, I've answered your question.
Yeah.
So with that, any other questions on the Street Department? So with that, any other questions on the street department? Hearing none.
Want to talk about Plaza?
Yeah, I can talk about the Plaza. Memorial Plaza is the next one. This budget is funded by the general fund, and it's budgeted for $24,000. Now, some of that, if I could highlight on the utilities, I anticipate that going down. When we made some of the electrical improvements, Ameren makes you sign agreements to at least cover those costs. So in 21 months, that'll drop down, and then we'll just be paying that normal rate. So I do anticipate this getting under $20,000. As far as what's included in there in, you know, contractual services, a big chunk of that is obviously mulch, irrigation work, restroom cleaning is a big one in the tune of $5,000, $6,000. Utilities, flag replacements, there's just a lot more things there that, you know, when you get into it, you realize that you've got to have covered. Any questions on that? I do anticipate that dropping, though, as we move forward in the $15,000 to $20,000 range.
And this chart just basically summarizes the capital from all the budgets, anything over $10,000. So it's just a summary of all the different departments and their capital.
Okay, on to enterprise funds. Enterprise funds would be all the utilities. These funds are paid by basically citizens' utility bills. First one is gas distribution department. I would like to recognize Scott, so Scott Stidman, Gas Superintendent in the crowd. I appreciate you being here, Scott. If there's any specific questions, please feel free, Scott, to speak up to. This is a, this is one of the larger budgets. The budget for this year is $7,956,480. As comparison, there were some inter-fund transfers in there, so that may, bear with me here, look a little bit confusing. So I would like to just address that real quick before I get going. Julie, you can add, too. So there's the $800,000 that we've been talking about, I've highlighted it up there. So that's included in that 7.9 number. That's the 18,000 that's being borrowed for the 911, if that makes sense. So when I'm comparing my numbers, I did not include that, so we're probably somewhere close to 7.15 million versus FY '18, if you take out the inter-fund transfer of 9 million, it was 6.7 million. So we're up 18%. If you remember, I talked about reallocating salaries, that's a big chunk of that, reallocating salaries. One of the billing salaries is going towards this one now. As part of the bigger purchases, we anticipate purchasing about $1.15 million or MCFs of gas, which is $4,312,500. So out of that budget is the purchase of gas. 10% of that, of the income, goes to the general fund. So that's $380,000 for the franchise fee, and another $380,000 for the natural gas utility tax. As far as capital expenditures, the wastewater department, as we go forward, we're looking to replace our 12-year-old vector truck. In discussions, we felt it appropriate to have 30% of that come from the gas department. Gas department uses a vector truck, they usually call out, actually, Scott calls Todd, and then they'll use that, obviously, with more utilities in the ground, there's more potholing, it's a very valuable piece of equipment. As far as other capital expenditures, new gas leak detector, new truck for the superintendent. His old truck is going to the water department, I can expand on that if needed. And then also a new truck for the department to replace another one. That's one of the main frontline trucks, and that's budgeted for $50,000. Actually, I'm going to backtrack here, I apologize. A couple of other things we're working on is a GIS-based data collection tool. We're in the middle of discussing with multiple companies, from the people that do our gas engineering, to also some local GIS. But this is something Scott's been working on for some time. We're not sure if we're there yet, but this is something that the feds are pushing as far as accountability with what's out there in the system. In the event of incidents, explosions, whatever, there's a lot of stuff that we need to know in the event of that. So this will change the way we do things, all the guys in the field, as far as Julie tickets. I don't know, Scott, do you want to add to that at all? So those will be costs, if we don't need it in this fiscal, those are things we're going to always be looking as we go forward to get into that side of the business, more from the pencil and paper as builds. Another big one that we'd like to start really soon is the external corrosion direct assessment services. And this would be to have a engineering company come up, we're budgeting $26,000. And the biggest thing with this, in simple terms, is for them basically to inspect, through indirect inspection, of our 5.6-mile feeder line. And this is all part of integrity management, to make sure that that pipe is what we expect it to be, and if we need to do anything going forward. So as that comes in, we'll share that report with you guys. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions with the gas department. All right. I'm just going to go right on to the slides up there, go through the water fund, but I'll discuss that as we go. Next one is the wastewater treatment department. Superintendent Todd Franny is here tonight, so I appreciate him being here. Did I miss something, Todd? Speak up. Wastewater departments. We have budgeted $3,046,000, or $46,160. This is up about 2.7% from what we budgeted in FY '18, which was just under $3 million. This is funded by the water fund. And the water fund funds the water treatment department, the wastewater treatment department, and the water distribution department. We anticipate through sewer utility fees, I'll discuss water as we get into the water, sewer fees, we anticipate our revenues to be $2.95 million. Capital expenditures, I just mentioned the new vector truck. We would like to replace the existing 12-year-old machine, and we're estimating out of the wastewater department $224,000 for that. You'll notice as we get through the rest of the agenda, I would actually like to get permission, as we go forward, to basically move forward with, not the purchase, but to start accepting proposals for that. Other things we are working on, just in general, new preventative maintenance program software, similar to what I discussed in Scott's with the GIS. This software is becoming more critical to do our daily tasks. So we budgeted for that $8,000. Also, we'd like to make some major SCADA upgrades in both, the wastewater and water treatment, and we budgeted $30,000 for that. As we get closer to that, I'll come forward with more of an explanation of that. We have recently been working with a new company called SCADAware on that work. And then lastly, hopefully, we're coming to you within several months for finalization of the wastewater facility plan that McMahon Group is working on. Is there any questions? All right, moving on. Next department is the water distribution department. This is under Superintendent Paul Almond. Always keep in mind, too, that the water distribution department on here consists of five employees, but they do cross-train with the gas department. The water distribution department, I'm anticipating a budget of $1,562,650. This is up from the FY '18 budgeted amount, about 1%. And then this is budgeted also, like I said, with the water fund. So we anticipate water utility fees to be $3.2 million. Capital expenditures here, we have four backhoes between the departments. We would like to trade in our 2013 Caterpillar backhoe, which has a five-year guaranteed buyback through Altorfer. We anticipate this to be about $60,000, and that we would own that machine. Also, we did a lot of directional boring, a lot of fusing, polyethylene fittings, $4,000 to replace the electrofusion processor. And then also, we have distribution projects, which we have submitted for an EPA permit for those, we do annually. The major portion of those projects are Almond, and I'll discuss that as we go forward with the capital projects plan, Fur Street, and then some other miscellaneous projects. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions on that department. We will move on to the water treatment department. Water treatment department is under the direction of Bob Burton. He's here tonight, Superintendent of Water Treatment. And water treatment, we have budgeted this year $3,557,540. This is down about 6.5% from FY '18 budgeted, which was about $3.8 million. This is also funded by the water fund. Capital expenditures here, too, actually, I've combined some of our, some of our normal stuff, so it's not all in that capital outlay line item, but I'll explain that as we go if you have any questions. So some of the out of the ordinary expenditures, I'll explain. One is plant number two, filter and softener rehabilitation. We're budgeting about $340,000 for that. Those are long overdue, we've been discussing them in the past few years. SCADA upgrade, like I just mentioned, I'd like to budget $35,000 to make some major improvements there. And those costs will continue. This is just a start on the upgrade of our SCADA. Annual well maintenance, found out the hard way last year, one of our wells had some issues. As such, we'd like to budget annually over a 10-year period for eight of our wells. So one well a year to just poll, service, televise, make sure we're getting the appropriate flow, those sort of things. So we're budgeting $50,000 for that. Another fairly large item to kind of piggyback onto the wastewater facility plan, we'd like to move forward, and I'll come forward with that agreement, and I would say in the next month or so, for further discussion, we can discuss now, but into some more details, I will bring Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly here, too, provided you guys approve this budget. We'll bring them here for a further discussion on that. But right now, I'd like to budget $170,000 for that. And that would be an all-encompassing study, rate study, future treatment processes, basically just looking at that out 20 years, just to figure out what we're going to need to fund this department. Next, and please stop me if you've got questions as we go, some of the smaller things, IEP-A UCMR, this is the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule, so just additional testing from the EPA, $5,000. We'd like to replace, we've talked about this for three years, too, the reaction basin curtains, $30,000 budget, that's just from material. The employees of the wastewater treatment, or the water treatment department, will most likely be installing those. And then also the Phase 2 modification, which we budgeted last year, we finally, I just came to you guys for approval of that, we budgeted $600,000 for that. That includes some additional construction engineering, some things to get us through that project. We do anticipate that project starting here within the next several months. Actually, I had a pre-construction meeting last Friday. Any questions? Hearing none. We will move on to the stormwater utility. Stormwater utility, a big chunk of that is, well, it's run by Jamie Bullard, pretty much one employee. We do pay for a portion of some of the other salaries that basically contribute to sweeping and some of the televising on the storm sewer. So a percentage of a street employee and a percentage of a wastewater employee go towards the stormwater department to pay for some of those services. That department, we're budgeting $1.568,230. This is up from FY '18, about 14.3%. This one fluctuates with some of the capital expenditures that I'll explain. We do project revenues of 1.15 million to this fund. This is an enterprise fund. While we're creative with it, it is just for stormwater improvements. So as we get to capital projects, I'll explain that as we go forward. It does pay for curb and gutter, trench backfill, inlets, all those sort of things that helps us get done what we need as far as streets. Some of the capital expenditures, one of the big one, and unfortunately, they've come up in the same year, they're funded by different departments. We had planned to piggyback those on separate years, but we'd like to replace the also 12-year-old Johnston sweeper that we have, and we'd like to replace that at a budget of $252,000. I hope to be coming to you guys within the next month with that purchase. We are working with a vendor as we speak. That was down the past year, most people probably didn't notice, but we did contract out sweeping due to the repairs that we had to make to the sweeper. So we spent, unfortunately, a lot of time in Troy, Illinois, getting serviced.
I noticed.
I know you noticed. You told me about it.
I even called one citizen, I thanked her, she was cleaning the drains out by her house.
Yeah. So, nice-looking streets, and a lot of communities are assisted by a street sweeper. So this is a valuable piece for us. Also, I've got in there 50% of the skid steer that I previously talked about, and then stormwater projects, budgeted $180,000. I know I gave you guys more of a summary, I won't go into the detail on all those right now, but in that public works summary that I gave to you guys previously, I worked with Jamie to basically detail out all the projects that we're looking at. Will we get through all those? Probably not. So as we go forward, I'll try to prioritize those as far as what we're going to, what we're going to work on. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Okay, came up quick on me. Capital projects is the next in your budget? I'm sorry, when I'm looking at the, on the computer here, it's such small text. 94, page 94. Thank you, Craig. So just to briefly explain this spreadsheet here, if we work over by columns, the total cost, these are in thousands. So 1,040 really means $1,040,000. As we move over, actually, I think Julie renamed this, so it makes a little more sense. General fund is the next column, so that's what portion funds the general fund. So you can track that 2.330 number back in some of the previous slides. Next would be motor fuel tax fund. I'll explain that budget as we go forward, too, $95,000. The water fund is $400,000. That's separated by $330,000 is basically Schwartz Acres, that's Circle Drive. The main reason for that is, that's going towards the sanitary sewer reconstruction. The other ones don't have major sanitary improvements. And then the stormwater fund is the next. Like I said, that goes towards curb and gutter, manholes, anything that we can put that towards. And then lastly, I have other in there. We're always working with the park district, township, and I'm working with Joel Dickerson right now, just to kind of piggyback some work they want to do in Northwoods. So we should... So we show those because that's kind of a pass-through amount, if that makes sense. So with that, projects, now I'll work down by rows. First one is Circle Drive. You'll see in the agenda, I'd like to get permission to bid as we go forward, but this one is 100% design, it's ready to go. Actually have a meeting on March 28th with the residents, provided approval, to move forward with this project. Obviously, I've got to get bids and everything, too. Next would be First Avenue. This would be the next phase, basically off of what we did last year, and this is curb and gutter pavement to get all the way to Birchwood on South First, from Birchwood to Delwood. Next project, Adams Street Reconstruction. This is between Main and First. Wasn't anticipating doing this project this year. Unfortunately, winter was really tough, in particular on the street. Some of our concrete streets, unfortunately, and I won't go into a long explanation, but we've tested them, some of them have alkali silica reaction in them, which is an exponential, basically failure of the concrete pavement. Ashland, Adams Street, actually Adams by Jefferson School, they all have this. So while they look nice, when they start to fail, they fail exponentially fast. If you look it up on Wikipedia, ASR, alkali silica, in quotes, it says "concrete cancer." So that's probably enough explanation right there. Anyway, we can't keep up with it. We're putting, every time it snowed, we're putting 10 tons of patch in that straw, small stretch. So we'd like to replace this in kind. Red sidewalks will go away, per my plan, but basically, you'll see everything in place as you see today in that section. Next would be overlay. I talked to Jeff Evener, and that's probably a little bit misleading, that's not your typical mill and overlay. If you jump down where it says heat scarify, seal coating, GSB, that's coming out of that overlay line item. So currently, we do not have planned a traditional mill and overlay. It's all projects. We have some major projects here, and more seal coating. I budgeted $760,000 for that. But with that in the overlay, actually, I probably should have added that. I think I had it labeled differently before. If you go to the middle column, the miscellaneous curb and the PCC patching come out of that $760,000. About 460 budgeted for the heat scarifying and seal coating. Patch, PCC patching, I'd like to continue what we did on Jefferson, from Plum to Main, but this time focus in front of Jefferson School from First to Fourth. Unfortunately, we'll go through the same thing, where we probably ought to close one direction of traffic. We'll have to do that during school, while school's out, but that'll be somewhat of a headache in the summer, working on that. And I'll come forward with these projects for your approval. Next one, seal coating, 95,000. Those streets are listed there. That's actually going to come up later in the agenda to move forward with that, and that would just be those that are funded by Motor Fuel Tax Fund. I anticipated using some of the heat scarifying. With IDOT, you've got to do a pilot project with that. It's a lot of extra work. I don't think we're there yet. Hopefully, in a couple of years, IDOT's there where that's a smoother process. Sanitary storm sewer lining, those projects are on there. Been working with Todd and Jamie on that. And then engineering for East Cortland Phase One. This is the $75,000. This is the initial expenditure as a part of the project that we got through POATs, or the 70% funding for that. This is the engineering that's not part of that 70/30. And this would be to basically widen Cortland for where it left off previously, the five-lane section, going through Commerce to Main Street, including Main. So we'd like to start the design on that, the Phase One. Next would be engineering for 2019 capital projects. I've also listed those there. These are things that please review, look at. These are kind of our planned expenditures. Once we move forward with these, it gets it in the hopper, kind of ready to go for next year, you'd start seeing these in this list as far as going out to construction. So some of those projects would be Baumann Street from Jackson to Main. This is a tough one, just due to the location. And then we're trying to get a year ahead of the Main and Jackson signalized improvements, too. I think we'd like to, I wasn't sure if I want to be with it, behind it, or in front of it. After further looking at it, I think we'd like to get there first and let the four-way come through it. Schwartz Acres is the next. This would be the next phase off of Circle. This would be Paris and Ridge, so starting the engineering on that. And then one that doesn't include sanitary, but some other things such as sumps, sidewalk, is just kind of finalizing some of the design we've worked on, on Nebraska, which is from Jackson all the way to Polk. With that, any questions on capital projects?
Just one comment. I think it's the first time in 21 years we haven't had an actual overlay of blacktop.
Traditional.
Traditional, the budget can't handle, it's normally $1 million. So our expenditures are up, you know, benefits, wages, all these things, and our budget can't handle it. I think the community needs to know that.
And I would say we're behind, like any other community, on our annual overlay. I am encouraged, though, obviously, the past here in Morton, the past board members, the past staff members, we're in pretty good shape on sanitary sewer. I would hedge that we're probably second to none. So I'm trying to get ahead. Circle Drive, Baumann, Tyler, second. I'll come forward with kind of a five-year plan on that. But we're starting to catch some of the, you know, sanitary sewers. We're pretty much, the entire village is new sanitary sewer or lined. So I think we're going to be getting into, and I've been working with Todd over the next, I don't know, five years and after, our biggest challenge is going to be going after a plan with you guys on how we attack some of the laterals. So when we've lined a sewer main, we really didn't address the laterals, which infiltration, possible failure, those sort of things within the right of way. That's something we just need to address, I think, going forward and discuss it. Obviously, the homeowner owns it to the main, so these are delicate things as we go forward. But I think we're in good shape sanitary-wise, so hopefully, we have less than three major projects, you know, going forward, and we can reallocate some money to share towards seal coating and overlay.
I have a question about the, excuse me, about the concrete. In your opinion, is this something that's avoidable, or is it inevitable over age, or was the mix potentially wrong? What do you feel about that?
Yeah, I mean, several decades ago, this was found by engineers, it was found by IDOT. I'm very confident going forward that if we put concrete in the ground, that we can get it to last the appropriate timeframe. I think this was a unique thing, just wasn't caught in time. Now with that, I would like to add that inspection is very important. I've been working with Millenia locally. I think that's a very important aspect on this. If we're going to put the concrete in the ground, we need to be coordinating with IDOT, which I do, to get people into the supplier. It's not saying we don't trust the local supplier, but the aggregates that are supplied for our concrete is crucial to the longevity of that pavement. So those are things that, you know, we need to spend money on, which we have consistently, but just sitting back and trusting, no offense to the contractor and supplier, sitting back and trusting the contractor and supplier, no. I would never put down a yard of concrete ever again. We need to make sure that we got the qualified people involved to make sure we're using the right aggregate, the right cement in the mix, and that needs to be IDOT-certified material. They do the R and D. We piggyback on top of that.
Because IDOT has specific aggregates that they use, and that's what we need to use.
And this was about 20 years ago. They were just using, and I won't go into the explanation on that, anyone can look up alkali silica, but I can show you some of the samples, though, that we've pulled that, you know, it creates a gel-like substance in there, and it just expands, and when it blows out, it goes. That's the exponential. So if you drive down even Adams from First to Fourth, it's very discouraging. It was done not that long ago. If you look close, you can start to see the signs. So we've had people out from IDOT, we've had the PCI Institute, some of those experts out, and it has it. You don't see it right now, but once it starts going, it's going to go fast.
Is that what happened on the overpass?
I don't know that's what happened on the overpass, but where you have seen it with IDOT is a lot in the last 20 years, Cedar Street Bridge, a lot of the concrete parrot pits that have fallen. When you drive by, you're like, man, that's really failing quickly. A lot of that's ASR. That happened about 20 years ago. IDOT grabbed a hold of it. I think politics prevails a lot of times when you're making changes with concrete suppliers and all that. Unfortunately, there's politically a lag there, and I think that lag happened for almost too long. But I think it's under control now. I'm not going to claim to be an expert, though. I wanted to dispel the myth, though, that I don't think we should just go all asphalt Any other questions?
So Craig, do you anticipate long-term, that, I guess you do anticipate long-term, that you'll be able to move away from the focus of some of these major capital street reconstruction projects and have some funds available to put back into traditional, I guess, mill and overlay, asphalt pavement?
Yes.
Maintenance?
And I think the key is catching everything in time, and honestly, that's the failure you see when you drive around a lot of communities around here. When the funding goes away, as you know, Ken, if you can't catch stuff in time, so am I nervous? Yeah. But I think with a combination of catching these streets in time and using the different funds that we have, we have MFT. I think the stormwater utility is huge, 20% towards some of these projects. That funding, I think, will allow us, I think we'll still always be what I feel is a little bit behind, but I think we will be in a good enough place that I'm comfortable moving forward, if that makes sense. But a delicate balance between seal coating, mill and overlay, full-depth replacement, it's just, you know, that's the delicate balance.
Are you overly optimistic?
Well, when I say that, no, I don't. Do I think I'm going to be at 100%? No, not at all. Am I optimistic that we should, if I can keep in that 2.5 million range of funding? That's the delicate thing. That goes back to the sales tax and all those things. The general fund, yeah, that concerns me. If that starts going down, that's concerning if I can't fund more than $2.5 million going forward. So I should preface that. But I think next year, yeah, I need to dedicate 1.52 million to an overlay program, which includes seal coat, mill and overlay, those sort of things. With that, I'd be optimistic that we could stay at a level that's appropriate, not 100%. So similar to maybe pensions in Morton. I think we've funded those appropriately compared to other communities.
And trustee Newman, Craig blew my bubble, because when we got Woodland done, I thought we could up the blacktop, but then Schwartz Acres, we have to attack now, so we don't have those extra funds. But I think we also have to remember the $700,000 we had on special tax on our utilities to pay off the fire station. We no longer have that. That's built into the general fund, plus the state's taking another 600. So you've got about a $1.3 million turn there that we don't have, and the general fund's going down four. So my warning to everything is, is it sustainable, how we're doing things?
So I'm not optimistic on the general fund long-term, but what I am optimistic on is working with Todd, Mike Engel, but, you know, being creative even on some of our sewer stuff going forward. Todd and I are discussing, as we move forward, hopefully in the future with a new TV camera, is, you know, doing some of that locating, getting into some of that business that we've been contracting out in the past and getting a better handle even on that. But I'd say, I mean, we've been televising a quarter to the sixth of the town for what, several decades? So, you know, a lot of my confidence is relying in a lot of that televising and a lot of the work that's going on behind the scenes to basically inspect, you know, preventative maintenance-type stuff.
Yes, I am a little concerned about long-term pavement maintenance. I guess what I've seen in the community is a lot of the relatively new pavements, stuff that has been put in the last 10 years, is showing signs of failure. And I'm just thinking that we need to find funding to increase the amount of pavement maintenance that we're, have traditionally done. I think we need to up the program. Otherwise, we're going to start seeing more failure. I know we do a very good job at crack sealing and trying to maintain the pavements in that manner, but even at that, we're seeing a lot of it. I mean, asphalt is deteriorating rapidly.
Yeah. And I would agree with you. And in asphalt, like we've talked about, I mean, you know, we're in that 15 to 20 year, you're going to have to go after it with something, whether that's long-term seal coating more to move that along, but I don't disagree with you there. While I'm optimistic, I'm hanging on for the ride, you know? And costs are going to go up. That's the other, there's that other elephant in the room, too.
I mean, I don't think it's any secret to you, it's probably to many of the board members, but I'm a very, very strong proponent of seal coating, and I think seal coating can do amazing things to maintain the asphalt pavements that we have, to really lengthen the life of them. I know it's a bitter pill to swallow for many people, but I really think we need to seriously consider doing more.
That's fair. And on our, the seal coating, I anticipated doing more through motor fuel tax funds even this year, but the heat scarifying, the reason why we're doing the heat scarifying is that some of those streets are kind of past that, that light as far as the cracks, and we're trying to cut down the cracks that come through to extend the life there, but even that, we're trying to be creative, and, you know, my bid opening will probably be opened, you know, along with East Peoria's, in East Peoria, trying to do whatever we can to get the best price, too, because that is, that's a delicate one also. I appreciate the questions, though. Anything else? All right.
I think you've done a good job. All the staff has, as far as putting together the budget and explaining it there. I think it's something that definitely needs to be out in public. I don't know how many people listen to this, but at least try to get the information out to public where the funds are spent, the challenges we face.
And I appreciate that, and I know transparency is a big thing, but my office is open to, I'm glad to answer questions from the public. You know, we get website ones, I got one today, hey, when's this project coming? It takes a little bit of our time to respond to those type of comments. So if somebody's really confused, has comments, ask the question. Website's a great spot to start from. So I appreciate you saying that. Okay. Moving on to 911 Consolidated Fund. Not sure which one of the...
I was going to say, Jeff's kind of gone over this already. This is the fund that will, like I said in the beginning, be like the business entity that operates the rental space of the police station for the TC3 operations. I had put in this budget, transferring in from 800,000 from the gas fund, and I had included transferring it back out. Pat McGrath and I have had this discussion, you're really not supposed to be borrowing money from a fund at year end. We may end up having to turn around at the beginning of the next year and borrowing the money back if we have not funded, you know, that via a loan, but that's basically all that there is. The 800,000 is a pretty close number. We've expended some monies already, and I think, was 837 was the most recent number I've seen?
67, I think. 867?
867, okay.
I think it originally come at 814, and I believe it was 867 the other day when we... when we met with Keach.
That's correct.
So we'll move forward in what we call the special revenue funds. Just quickly go through the rest of this. Tourism fund...
Excuse me. On the 911 fund, could you refresh my memory? I think there was some figure thrown out back several months ago as far as what anticipated rent would be.
I believe we were thinking 23, 25,000, something like that per year.
And then from that, we would have operating expenses, maintenance, I assume, building maintenance type expenses that would come off of that.
We could allocate, you know, a portion of the maintenance cost for the police department.
The way the intergovernment agreement is drafted is we will come up with a figure, and it's almost a negotiated figure, between what we believe is a fair rental cost and what the TC3 believes it is. And it is drafted in there that a source that we can call in to, has expertise in that area to come up with an equitable fee. Is that right?
That's generally correct. There's a process. If we're unable to reach an agreement regarding the negotiated rental sum, it's my recollection and anticipation that TC3 will be responsible for the maintenance of triple net style leases, for the maintenance of the space that they're renting. So I wouldn't anticipate we would have substantial expenses for the leased space. Ordinary maintenance would fall under them.
I guess the point I'm getting to is there should be a net between what rental revenues are minus expenses and maintenance of the facility and whatnot that would then be able to use, be used to pay debt service or whatever we do to fund this $800,000, right?
Correct.
Now, we looked at what kind of, based on some estimate, do we have some estimate of what that would be?
Based on the rates I received when I talked to the banks a few months ago, I don't believe the rent will cover the mortgage payment or whatever you, however you want. Depending on, depending on how long we want to finance it for.
Yeah, what kind of term are you looking at?
Right. We were looking at like a 10-year term. So we may have to finance it for a longer period of time in order for the rent to cover. That'll be things we'll have to all discuss and agree upon whenever we figure out what we're going to do.
And as Julie stated earlier, we don't anticipate beginning any of the rental until fiscal year '20.
Right.
According to the conversation with the architect last week, we're looking at construction starting the week of June 4th with an approximate 12-month timeframe, which would put us on target for the July 1st, 2019 mandate by the state to be consolidated and have it going. But there's a whole lot of things that kind of come together and we're trying to work out right now with the TC3.
But again, most of the bills on that addition are triple net. So they will pay that. So there shouldn't be much deducted from the rent.
Right, right. But I guess the bottom line is we've got to come up with a way of funding that.
Correct.
I mean, we can borrow, borrow short-term, borrow from the gas fund, but we've got to...
Correct.
Correct.
We've got to come up with a way of...
And she's got some interest rates and we're looking at that. Julie will come back with some examples of how you might do that.
My thought is I don't really want to borrow the money during the construction period because then you're, you know, paying interest when you have no rents coming in to cover the interest even. So I would like to, you know, try to get us through until we can actually, it's finished and we know what the final cost is, know how much we're going to have to borrow, and then borrow the money at that time.
When will we know how much rent? When do they decide that?
Chief, do you know?
When do they decide?
Well, I think that's something we'll be working on as we get towards the next fiscal year as we start into that with them. And when we let them know what the rent's going to be, they're working on their budget right now. Trying to get, that's where the $340,000 come out of. I'm going to go off the top of my head, but it's maybe 3.4 million is what they're looking at. We'll go in that ballpark on that. But I know we're struggling right now with a lot of decisions being made and a lot of things that have to be done legally. IMRF is a big thing right now. And we're on a timeline there to be able to get IMRF so that we can hire personnel. Because we're looking at actually hire personnel before that construction date starts. So we're looking like June 1st. And Washington will close down. We'll close down and go to East Peoria and Pekin. And so at that point, we're looking, they will be TC3 employees, no longer Morton employees, no longer Pekin or TazCon or East Peoria, Washington.
As you're talking about that, I know this is maybe a little bit off, but especially with Scott in the room, too. I just wanted also, you know, there, some of the things happening here are affecting other parts of the village, in particular, the gas department. Scott's actually kind of last minute here, headed down to Evansville, Indiana tomorrow to talk with Vanguard, who is a third-party call-taking. So we're kind of, with some of this uncertainty you're even hearing here, there may be some changes. I want to let you guys know about it as we get closer here and get some more information. I'll work through Randy. But Scott's got a lot of work to do, you know, to be in compliance with the feds and everything. So he's got to train all those call-takers like he did previously with Morton. So with some of this uncertainty, the costs are actually fairly reasonable. But he's going down there and that will, that would be a change. So we're looking at our phone service right now to where, when people call in, we've got to have an emergency number for people to call in the event of an incident, explosion, whatever. So right now, we're looking at the 266-5361 number, changing that on a lot of signs, documents, whatever. And we're kind of having to work fast even with some of the mailers that we're sending out here. And, but that may change kind of what we do there. Obviously, as this becomes more certain on his end, we may kind of funnel back to that. But there's some concerns on ours that we want to cover. And that's not just gas, but any after-hours type stuff. You know, the little things that people don't think about that are, you know, little hometown services. We're trying to keep those the same. But some of those differences may be when you call and after 5:00, you're going to get a live person, which will be great. But it may be someone in a, you know, another city that'll be calling out our on-call people and those sort of things. But I thought this was a good time as we're talking about it, that I know I've been working with Craig pretty close, but, you know, some of the things are trying to fall into place aren't happening quick enough for our gas department and what we need to do there. If there are any questions with some of those things, we'll probably come forward and give you kind of an update on where we're at as we get closer. But it seems like every day we go through that. There's some questions that Scott or I have. How are we going to take care of this? So I think it's a good thing. I mean, I think long-term, hopefully, the consolidation's a good thing. But it's going to change. I know it's going to change for Craig. It's going to change for everything we do. Every time somebody calls, it's going to change some of those things. So I don't know if that was the best time to add that.
That's fine.
The gas is serious. Somebody has a gasoline.
Well, that's just the gas leak. We get faxes in the middle of the night for emergency. Julie locates it. We've got to pay up to them. That's not going to really necessarily be coming to us, so.
So that's incorporated in this, all the Julie tickets, all those, all those things? This company, we got references due to some of the other local gas companies in Illinois use them. So a pretty good reference. And they do call-taking for all kinds of stuff, so. We anticipate that going smooth. But June 1st's groundbreaking and that's when all the temporary stuff goes in. So we're kind of on a fast track to hopefully get something up and running by May 1, just to get the kinks out, so.
All right. Let's move on to tourism.
Okay, on the tourism fund, as you can see there, the total expenses is $462,070. The majority of that is normal operating expenses. Capital improvements, we have $180,000. And that is going to be, if you can see in the past, in fiscal year '17, we paid $525,000. That is when we purchased the former AC Church lot. And so the $180,000 is for improvements to that lot. And I'll let somebody else...
I asked trustee Nate Parrot to help come up with a design for the sidewalks to access the memorial in the middle and the sidewalk back across where all the school kids were crossing that and the mothers and where the old sidewalk was at the blacktop. So as we use that space, people can't just drive into the grass. Because if you go out and look at it now, somebody has done that. So we're trying to make it safe for pedestrians and events and that. So Nate's going to be coming back. We've worked on a sketch.
Yeah, well, part of it, too, we wanted to protect our investment. We had, you know, the asphalt there that needed to be seal-coated. That's a portion of the cost, too. Putting in some landscape islands to help with traffic flow, traffic safety. Like Mayor said, adding sidewalks along a raised curb, combination curb sidewalk along the side to protect pedestrians from traffic itself and really make it more inviting to the public to really use as an event space. You know, not only for the pumpkin festival, but we see it, you know, being used for other events, car shows, that type of thing, to really bring people to the area.
So we thought we need to get the infrastructure done for those event space.
The only thing I'd like to comment is the timing. We've been working with Leigh Anne and Cheryl and Susan. And, you know, they're wanting to use that this year. So we've been coordinating that. We're going to try to use it some. But that, to me, that would be, if we had to wait, that would be a reason not to wait is because, I mean, there's a lot of use for this. I mean, I saw something even recently on the farmer's market, you know, those sort of things. So we'll have, I told them we'll try to coordinate some of that if we come forward and do some of that work. But I think these are good improvements. If you drive out there now, you'll even see there's tire tracks in the grass. So some of these things will protect, like you said, that investment where you can just drive off in the grass.
And we don't want to vent there. And everybody drives in the grass and unloads and, you know, so.
So we'll have, out of that, Nate's assistant with that. But hopefully, we'll have a sketch that we can work through with you, Randy, too, the three of you guys, to be able to present something to the board before we move forward with anything.
So Nate agreed just to come up with some sketches, some ideas, a starting point there?
I'm just an engineer. He's got that landscape architect side of it. I was hoping for a little help.
I noticed that, I noticed that.
Might have some trees and some of that.
I noticed that, too, Craig.
Do you want to talk about motor fuel?
Yes. Next would be motor fuel tax. Mentioned previously the $95,000 for seal coating. And that'll come up in the agenda here next. But also, if you look at capital outlay there, I can't see if I'm on the right one or not here. 104, you can see the 295 is the anticipated budget. 200 from SALT. That's our anticipated SALT budget. Previously, we purchased that with general funds. So you're not seeing that on the general fund side. And now you'll start seeing it on the motor fuel tax side. And we passed a resolution several months ago on that. As far as the funds, I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, Julie's at $400,000, I believe, that we're bringing in annually.
About $450,000.
$450,000.
And that 200,000 does save 200,000 out of the general fund using it for SALT.
So if you flip back to the balance historically here, and we can change some of that going forward, but when I'm projecting some of those costs for SALT, seal coating, I'm also keeping in mind about three years down the road, when we fund our 30% portion and potentially more on the Cortland project, we've typically funded that portion of the share of PUAT or STU funding with motor fuel tax funds. Ken probably knows that reasoning more than me because he sat by Bob Ray for many years. But I think, I think the thinking was we always had money in the pot there to be able to do things. So we continue that today. And I'm projecting those numbers out to be able to spend upwards of a couple million in three or so years for that project. So those funds, engineering funds are going to come out of there and we'll have more of those. But as far as construction, the plan is right now to use motor fuel tax funds for that project, not including engineering or utility work.
And that job, project has been approved by PUATs?
Yes, yes.
So that is in the document?
Previously, we came forward and that's in, yes. Any questions on MFT? Now, Ken, with your comments previously, motor fuel tax fund, I mean, they haven't increased that in many years. So I don't think we can rely on that as a significant source to be able to fund our roads. And you'll hear that from Craig Fink, Tazewell County Highway. He's very outspoken on this. He's very passionate about this. There's a lot of documents out there. Tazewell County, some of the communities around us rely on MFT for SALT. And there's not enough, so, just to add to that.
Okay, the next budget we have is the business district. As you know, we've charged a 25 hundredths of a 1% tax within the business district and sales tax. And that money goes into this fund. The total budget for this upcoming year is currently $400,850. That includes capital outlay. We have budgeted $200,000. The business district commission is looking at some projects that they may be able to do. So we have budgeted basically a placeholder number for that. Hopefully, we will get some more information from them in the next couple of months. And so by the time the appropriations comes around, we can nail that number down a little better. You will also see there is a $100,000 transfer out. That is to repay the general fund money that the general fund put into the business district back in fiscal year, I believe, '16, when we did the parking lot between Jefferson and Adams. The business district paid for that but didn't have the funds, cash funds for that. So we transferred the money into there. So that's to repay for that. Any questions on that one? The next couple of funds, this is the social security revenue fund. This pays payroll taxes for all the village employees. That's a total of $322,450. The next fund is the IMRF fund. This pays the village portion of the fund requirements the state sets for, or the IMRF sets for us of what we have to pay to, for our IMRF employees. This does not include the police employees because they have their own pension fund. That's $221,000. Just kind of zipping through these last ones because, you know, everybody's probably tired of it by now.
Julie, what's current funding requirement for IMRF?
We're currently paying 9.89% as a village share. That has gone down.
That's down significantly.
Yeah, we were paying 11% the last two years ago. It went down to 10-something last year and down to 9.89%. And the employees themselves put in 4.5%.
And the enterprise funds, those, you'll see those contributions in the specific enterprise fund, so, gas, water, all that. That's why you see those on...
The IMRF contributions.
Right. These are just the general fund side of the IMRF costs. The next fund is the fire pension fund. You may not be aware, but our volunteer firemen get a whopping $5 if they serve on the, as a volunteer fireman for five or more years, they get a whopping $5 per month, per year that they serve as a quote-unquote pension. as a quote-unquote pension. We have, actually, I've just talked to two recently in the last year and a, or week and a half that have become aware of this. One gentleman, they can't apply for it until they turn 60. One gentleman turned 60 in 2013. And I had spoke with Jim Retailer, is one of the captains on the fires department. I had told him that there were some people who were eligible that as far as I know, were still living and we had not heard from them. You know, it's not a lot of money, but it's a slight bit of money for them for their service, you know, because it is a great service that they provide. That's what this fund does. Basically, it's pretty much money in and money out. We do have about $250,000 in assets in this fund. So as the age, you know, people are living longer, we probably will look at having to put additional monies into this because currently, all we do is put in the foreign fire insurance tax money we get for this. But probably down the road someday, we're probably going to have to start putting some general fund money into it to fund it. And last but not least is the police pension fund. This fund basically pays the pensions for the retired police officers. We're currently paying out about approximately $675,000 per year in pensions. And the total expenses is approximately 700, or is budgeted to be $740,100. The only other major expense is $60,000, which is paid to the, majority of that goes to the, is now Busey Bank had bought out Southside Bank, the trust department that manages the assets of the fund. They currently have about $12 million in assets, you know, subject to the market of how things go up and go down. So, thank, in summary, that's it. And I know that was lengthy, but I appreciate you listening and, you know, your questions. What I would like to see happen is, in the next couple of weeks, if you have any further questions, get a hold of me on this. And I would like to bring the final budget back. Jeff's already pointed out a couple of mistakes that he's seen. I'll get a corrected version out to everybody prior to the April 2nd meeting, unless we have something that delays it to the April 16th, so. Other than that, that's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Any comments by the trustees on the budget? All right, if not, we'll move on. Chief of Police.
I have nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Corporation Council. Director of Fire Emergency Services.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
And we're back to you, Director of Public Works, Craig.
I've got several items tonight, Your Honor. Some of them I mentioned previously. Obviously, I wanted to get the budget out of the way. But item A, I'd like to get approval for IDOT resolution appropriating motor fuel tax funds for seal coating. I would like to preface, you see a lot of $95,000 numbers. This is $100,000, if I could add that. I noticed the paperwork didn't add up. So for $100,000 to appropriate those funds.
Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any other questions? Call the roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item B, I'd like to ask for acceptance of bids for water distribution materials from HD Supply Water Works in Washington, Illinois, in the amount of $42,437.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Blounier.
I'd like to re-accuse myself from this vote, please.
Parrott.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item C, I'd like to ask for permission to request bids for the Circle Drive roadway reconstruction project between King Street and Ridge Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
No, we really need to vote for that, do we?
It has it on the agenda. I would say it's probably within adjusted discretion to do that, but.
Well, let's go ahead and vote. We got a motion.
This is a million dollar project, so I prefer to get your approval.
Okay.
Before I start going.
Let's call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item D, I'd like to ask for permission to request bids for the three 2018 public works vehicles that were mentioned in the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next one, again, permission to request proposal from Co-Equipment through the National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA, for a new 2018 Vector combination truck mounted sewer cleaner. Proposal will include the trade of the existing Vector.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
We've worked with Co-Equipment for many years. We know the piece that we want. I think Todd's spent a lot of time on this, predecessor Phil Roker too. But that's why I put this on here. We'd like to work specifically with Co-Equipment. They are a member of the NJPA, which is an alliance that allows us to forego bidding.
I would just mention that utilizing cooperative contracts is an excellent way to buy machinery, saves so much time and the bidding process has been satisfied, so.
Thank you.
Remember to find us a good street sweeper too. That piece of junk we got.
Well, if I could, if I could add to the sweeper sometimes, and Rod's, I became a member of NJPA on behalf of the village, actually working with Rod previously, the sweeper we're looking at right now. They're not a member of that, but I'll, I'll be working with you guys going forward on that.
I guess, I guess a question, you know, we, you talked on it briefly, but with both of those, you know, vehicles or pieces of equipment, you know, costing upwards around a quarter of a million dollars and already with the tight budget, do you feel it's necessary just because we've pushed them out for so long to do them both in the same year?
Yeah, we, we kept kind of pushing them along. That's a challenge we get in, we can kind of keep pushing them. I believe the Vector is at the right time. I think we're ready for that. The sweeper, I'll be honest, kind of got us, it kind of bit us. We spent a few too mu, too much dollars on some of the repairs and I just think it's just not going to be worth the money to keep putting money into this. I don't want to see it in Troy, Illinois for a couple of months next year. So we intended all along to do that, but I just think we're at a point where the Vector, we're using that every day for a lot of different things. Pot-holing for the other departments, you know, as I mentioned before, cleaning sewers, all those things. So I, I think it is appropriate, but it's a great question. I apologize, that was not the intent to bring them both forward. While they are separate funds, that was not our intent.
I know we went over the breakdown somewhat, but I mean, like for stormwater, for example, you know, the expenses they're projecting to be upwards of, you know, 1.56 million while the revenues are about 1.18. There's definitely quite, you know, some variety there. And is that, is largely attributed, of course, towards the vehicle? So I guess that's partially, you know, I guess the question, is one more important than the other? Or is it just at this particular time, just goes to bite the bullet?
Yeah, we knew at some point that would, that would definitely jump over. I mean, we bring in 1.15 million. We haven't had an increase in rates, gosh, for three or four years. So we pretty much know, you know, projecting increase in business and those things, what that's, revenue is going to be. We spend about $600,000 every year on operation and maintenance. So we always anticipate moving that half a million dollars over into depreciation reserve fund to be able to use for these type of purchases. So yeah, we don't anticipate every year being $400,000 over on expenses versus revenue. But that's one of the big purchases that, that put it over at almost $300,000.
But that's why we set up the storm fund, to pay for the sweeper and to pay for some of the curb and gutter.
We use the stormwater funds like crazy. I mean, we use it for curb and gutter. We, I mean, it really has allowed us to do what we need to do. We're so fortunate that, in my opinion, 12 years ago, this was implemented. Because I mean, we're, we're $14 million later. You know, you watch the news, there's not too many out there still that have it. They're trying to implement that. And we use it, we use it to televise, clean storm sewers, put in inlets, all those sort of things. So and the sweeper is another big part of that.
Well, there's definitely communities that don't have funds like that. You know, Peoria's been trying to develop one for years and they're, they're having some troubles.
We were the first one here to do it and we'd have to say thanks to trustee Darrell Verling for taking the time to do that. I bet it took him over a year to put that all together.
And we've been using the fund appropriately.
And that took the street sweeper out of the street department, out of the general fund, like putting that big piece in the stormwater fund.
Good question.
Any other comments? And let's call the vote on the Vector.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Blounier.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, next one, item F. It's that time of year and with our current compliance commitment agreement with the EPA, the semi-annual hydrant flushing is scheduled to begin April 8th and this time for approximately four weeks. Actually, just this morning, I've been working with these guys, Paul Alman. So one of the changes on this one is, I think we're going to flush for four weeks, 24/7. So we're going to have guys working 12 hours, round the clock, for four weeks to try to lessen complaints. We will be breakpoint chlorinating during that time. So residents should expect, like previous, higher chlorine, obviously within legal limits. But this is all part of our efforts to clean the system. So if there are questions, I can't stress enough, contact Village Hall. Yes, I will be on Facebook, I will be watching, I will probably comment. But the best course of action is to call me, to call Bob Burton, to call Trent Reed, call the water department if you have water quality concerns. We, we are on call 24/7, we will address those issues. So with that, I just want to make everyone aware that that is, that is coming.
Question.
Yep.
Now that we're almost six months away from our last flushing, what are we seeing out in the distribution system as far as maintaining chlorine residuals compared to historic?
We are getting better. Our oldest point, that we have to sample.
Trails of Timber Oaks.
Thank you, I can never remember it. Is now, it has been legal for the last three months. Legal is .5. We can never maintain that and we're gradually getting it out, but it's still a time concern. And if we won't get there, we just stay with it.
So it's the first time you're seeing it out that far?
The first time we've been legal out there for the last three years.
And then the east end of town, out Orchard Hills, out that way?
That is being addressed by CMNT with the water model study because they're rerunning the model and they're changing some stuff up that we need to do, which will direct us on how to get that connected. But yes, it is gradually building itself up. Like Craig said, we have a breakpoint to further clean the mains and that's a matter of monitoring to see how long we hold the chlorine at higher levels.
So you think there's still, still some cleaning occurring?
Yes, sir, there has to be because until we can figure out how to deal with the ammonia that's in our raw water and eliminate that, we will continue to have some problem with nitrification out in our system.
So some of the things, Nitrification Action Plan, those are things we're working on with the EPA now. We did, you know, we have an extension. I mean, our whole thing with the compliance commitment was chlorine residuals. So we have asked for an extension on that and that's why this, this flush is, is critical. And hopefully, we feel confident when we're done here that we can maintain that .5 there and throughout. It's our goal. I think we've been seeing improvements though.
So we're, we're making progress, a lot of progress, but still have some issues ahead of us.
Yeah, and I think that's where the water facility plan, getting into looking at more things, change of treatment process down the road, those sort of things have to be looked at. The ammonia in the wells, we've discussed again, you know, some things we can do on that side of things, you know, the wells. The unfortunate thing is when you look at that, you know, when, when we got the compliance commitment agreement, you don't have time, you know, to, to make long-term improvements. So to me, these are finishing up the short terms. We need to focus now, what is the long-term improvement? And then like with anything, even this, we're fighting this. We're also dealing with, you know, the lead and copper. Lead is not an issue. Copper, we're still struggling at the wastewater plant. Recently, we've been under our monthly average there. Obviously, those limits are.
Which is a good sign that corrosion control is working and.
Yes.
So making progress.
But in our six-month sampling, we're seeing trends, but we're still getting, we're, we're very close to that 90th percentile on copper too. So that's the unfortunate thing, you know, when we breakpoint chlorinate, when we flush, you know, the corrosivity, those things are changing during that. So you're kind of putting a four, six-week stoppage on that. I mean, we're continuing to monitor that and test, coupon testing, those sort of things. That's the unfortunate thing with our optimal corrosion control program. So we feel good. The 24/7 flushing though is just kind of a decision we made. It's unidirectional flushing is a majority of it. Conventional is just sitting on a hydrant flushing it, but the unidirectional is pushing from the plant out. So we thought if that's just a continuous, before we go on to the next one, we're verifying chlorine residuals and turbidity to see what's going on as we go. If we're not seeing improvement from this hydrant to the next hydrant, what's going on? Where's the water coming from? What is the issue? We're trying to dive into those issues. Hopefully, after this, we'll be able to even address some of the other long-term issues, which is, you know, water main under railroad tracks that are, you know, diving under that we're seeing potentially some changes where you have a lot of demand in that. So maybe we need to look at ice picking or some other technologies to clean those sections of main. But there's a lot of work going into it. We're hopeful in the short term that, you know, we're legal. We can finalize that agreement with the EPA. When I mention Nitrification Action Plan, that's going to be the one thing that come from that, that they're, they're going to expect us with the ammonia in the raw water to have a plan to monitor that. And Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we start seeing some issues from that, that's when we'll, you know, flush with breakpoint chlorination. And I anticipate doing that for probably quite some time, we would anticipate.
Yeah, flushing's not going to go away, the flushing that we've been doing, intensive flushing, I guess I'll call it.
Intensive, and we're wasting a lot of water. There's a lot of water going down, a lot of treated water going down. We're aware of that, but I think the other, we just, I mean, it's just a necessary evil right now. We would hope to improve that long-term where you're not wasting water. With that, with the flushing too, I would like to add that it's like snow plowing. It is a group effort. So I appreciate Todd, Mike Ingle, Scott Stidman. They do give us an employee to use during that four weeks that they're not able to use in their departments. So we do a lot of things with a small staff. So part of that's borrowing employees so we can still tend to water leaks, other things that come up during that time.
Okay, Craig, next item.
Lastly, this one's more exciting. Item G, Yard Waste Disposal Program, Spring 2018. We will be open Saturday, April 7th at 8:00 a.m. And that'll go several weeks, closing Sunday, April 22nd at 6:00 p.m. So this is the shorter one in the spring. Todd just presented, auxiliary's going to help us again. So I appreciate Craig's assistance on that. So no changes, same program, I think it's gone really well.
Planning and zoning officer.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Village trustees, anything tonight?
Just a big thank you to the staff, the department heads, those that attended also tonight and Julie, Craig. I know a ton of time was put into this and just the way it was celebrated tonight, I think it was a good overview for us, but hopefully is also beneficial for the public as well. Thanks for your transparency and open door policy, so.
Anybody else? If not, we do not need a closed session tonight. You're getting awfully easy, so. If we have a motion to end this evening.
So moved.
All those in favor? Let's go home.